Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our public meeting of planning for Monday, October 28th, 2024. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, accept the agenda. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the council, the township of Norglingary, accepts the public meeting of planning agenda of Monday, October the 28th, 2024.
Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor, motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, and ratify the minutes. Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move by myself, seconded by councillor Madden, that the council of the township of Norglingary accepts the minutes of the public meeting of planning of Monday, September 30th, 2024.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, motion is carried. Okay, and we have two zoning amendments, and we will start with Z-07, 2024. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, as you mentioned, we have two zoning amendments. So, the two of them, council may ask to make a recommendation. They will both be brought to the subsequent council meeting.
Microphone.
Microphone is off.
There you go. Want me to repeat? We're good?
No.
We're good. Perfect. Zoning amendment by law 07, 2024. The owner for this file, Martin Dumas. Location, 18873 Canyon Concession Road 5 in Alexandria. So, as you can see right there, it's pretty much between Maxville and Greenfield on Canyon Concession Road 5. So, this is what the maps looks like. It's a little bit confusing. So, what's happening with this property right now is it's actually four road numbers, okay? But they're all separated like the yellow lines that you see there. So, what the owner is doing right now, because there's only one dwelling on this, like on all the pink and the blue, there's only one dwelling at the road, at Canyon 5. So, what the owner is proposing to do, he's going to merge all the properties together, which is going to give him a 300-acre property altogether. And then what he's going to do is sever this 300-acre property into three different properties that are more than 74 acres. So, basically, he has three agricultural lots that he's allowed to build a house on it. Okay, so by doing this, what's happening is that my purple box that you see to your right, that is the first 74 acres. So, as you know, 74 acres is our minimum for agricultural lots. So, what he's doing, this zoning amendment here only concern the purple box and the little pink box within that square. So, this is your typical surplus dwelling, but only for that portion. The two other portions, they are both larger than 74 acres. So, eventually, the owner will be able to build a house on it, on each of them, and if he wants to sever them eventually. So, that's the whole purpose. That's why it's a little bit confusing with my lines, but that's what it is. So, I'm gonna go just a little bit further down. So, this is a close-up. So, as you can see, that's the dwelling right there. There's an existing barn as well. So, the owner is going to apply, going to have to apply for change of use for that barn. And the shed that you see on the agricultural portion right now will be demolished. So, it's not in a structural adequacy right now. So, it's going to be completely demolished. So, the official plan designation, so that's where my arrow is. So, you have some agricultural resource lands closer to the road, so closer to Canyon 5. And then north of those properties is rural lands. So, in this case, even though it's rural there, the owner is not able to create lots in the rural land, because the lots would be, they would be landlocked. Like, the rural is protected by the agricultural. So, he has to proceed the way he did with the 74 acres land. Zoning designation, for us, the entire properties are zone ag. So, that's the, you see them a little bit better here. So, all the yellow lines, that's how it is right now. So, he's merging that altogether. And we're just talking about the purple box right now. So, the purpose for this application, so it's to rezone. So, it was 74, I guess a little bit more than 74, 74.5, to rezone that 73, so less the residential portion. So, to prohibit residential dwelling, we're also acknowledging the lack in proper frontage from 200 meter to 156 meters. And we're also acknowledging, sorry, the lot area deficiency from 74 to 73.01. And we're also rezoning the 1.58-acre property from ag to general ag, special exception 251, simply to prohibit agricultural uses. So, that's a survey of the land that's being severed. So, as you can see, all the buildings and the septic system are all far away from property lines. So, there's no reduction in setback required. And the building, the agricultural building will be demolished. So, it's not even on that survey there. So, the discussion, as I mentioned, it's 300 acres. We're creating more lots. 1.58 acre will be the residential lot. So, the, like, as you know, the new OPA 24 just passed. So, basically, because it passed, an owner, so the two other lots, he will be able to build a lot, to build a house, sorry, on the lot, because they're agricultural. It's a lot. But as compared to today, before doing a surplus dwelling, they will now have to wait 10 years after the dwelling is completed to be able to do that surplus dwelling rule. So, that's part of the new OPA. It's to protect from, like, cases exactly like that. If, let's say, he would have two kids who want to build right now, they both build a house, and they sell them in a year, do the severance, and you have two more lots. So, it's to protect the agricultural from that. So, if, he's allowed to build a house, but only 10 years from now, from the final date of the dwelling, he will be able to do the other surplus dwellings.
Just a question on that.
Yes?
Jacob, does that show up on title? Like, if somebody were going to do a title search for it?
No, it would not. Well...
So, how do, how does, like, say, just using a real estate agent goes in, and somebody asks to, you know, list my house, and nobody knows, and you go through the wholesale, at what point would that sale get stopped?
Well, if you want the sale to sell just the house, it would have, it would need its own PIN number. So, for that, the severance would have to be done first.
Right.
And when he applies for the severance, the counties would ask us, when did this guy pass his final on the dwelling?
Right, because it's still one property.
Wait, exactly. If, you can't, like, for you, if you want to sell it, you would have to sell the whole 135 acres.
Right.
So, yeah, that's how. So, it's going to be between the counties and us.
Okay.
So, that's the property. So, you see the dwelling on the left-hand side, and the, the old, it's a really old barn. It's no longer a barn, but because it's been built as a barn, we're gonna have to do a change of use on it. You see that at the end of the driveway, right there, sorry. So, there's currently two existing entrance on that 73-acre portion. One will remain with the civic number for the house, and there's also a new one for the field. So, you see both pictures there. So, there's already an existing entrance for the field, for the agricultural portion. And that's just the surrounding area. So, just to show that it's in the middle of mostly residential rural properties, there's some cash crop on the other side of the road as well. So, it's really out in the country. That's on the one side. On the other side, you see the entrance there, right on your right-hand side. So, that's the surrounding area. So, it's compliant with our, with the neighboring properties. We did not receive any comments from members of the public on this file. We did receive one, because there's a drain running right across all three properties. So, if he would ever want to alter the drains, he would need raison d'etre's approval. And in conclusion, based on the criteria above, proposed zoning amendment confirms to the relevant policies of the SDG official plan. It's consistent with the provincial policy statement, and it's compliant with our zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Questions or comments from members of council? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to clarify. So, we got four. So, we're gonna end up with a small residential property, then three ag properties.
Correct.
And this is all about the residential property right now?
The residential and the other 73, because the other 73 will get a zoning to prohibit any more dwellings.
Okay, so then only two of those three he's gonna be able to build on?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, it's actually, really, he's got the 300. He's splitting into six properties, because one is separated by a road allowance, and the other one's on the other side of the track. So, it's a little bit more complicated. But for what, for what this is concerned, it's only for that small portion. Well, it's a, yeah, it's a good way to do. We always offer that to people, like, for development and stuff. So, as soon as someone has more than 150 acres, and they want to do a severance, so if you have 150, and you separate one acre, you have to apply the prohibit residential on the rest of the property. So, we always tell people, split it in half first, 75, 75, and then you can do another house on the other property, and another, so you can, you get the bonus lot, exactly. Because we're the only township in SDG that's only 74. All the others are 100 now. So, we decided to keep it like that. So, it's, it just gives more options for them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam CEO.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? A second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? And a third and final time?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to Z-08, 2024. Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the owner for this one, Colin Henri, Cedar Ridge Designs. Location is 18331 Canyon Concession Road 8, Maxville. So, as you can see right there, north of Maxville. I'm sure you're all familiar with the property. We've passed some zoning amendments already, and some minor variants for the property. So, that's what it looks like right now. So, the purple lines are existing. The house, the pool have been separated from the rest of the property. And the two larger buildings that you see there is actually Cedar Ridge Designs right now. Sorry, the official plan, agricultural resource lands, and same thing for zoning designation. It's general agricultural. As you can see there, it's AG 179. So, the 179 was passed because we split the house from the residential lands. And on the AG 79, there can no longer be a single family dwelling. Okay? So, the purpose for this application, so my report was pretty long, a lot of words, but basically, what we want to do, it's just because the owner of the property right now, there's the, how he lives in the house, as you know, and he owns the property north of that. So, it's 53 acres of land, and we applied that zoning bylaw layer to prohibit the dwelling, to acknowledge the deficiency and setbacks. And we also wrote on our original zoning bylaw that it was to permit the continued operation of a commercial cabinet manufacturing facility. So, that's, that's good. That's what we needed at the time. But what it does is that it's too specific for the owner. So, basically, there's no room for growing his business. So, he just, he's thinking for future uses or for future businesses, for his sons and whatever, if he would need to, like, to have something else added to the property, he may be, like, denied by the bank or denied by whatever, because this is too specific. So, right now, the only thing he can do with the business is a cabinet manufacturing. So, if he sells, the other owner has no other option. So, basically, what the owner wanted is just to see if there were options to add more uses. So, not, not like a blanket use for any commercial use, because we cannot do that. But on top of all the agricultural use, what we have in the OP, and I discussed this with Peter Young, and he offered the owner to add that as permitted uses. So, it's called on-farm diversified uses. So, basically, what that is, is anything like, like a brewery, or a cheese factory, or anything like that, that would fit into a more of a rural setup for a business. And if it complies with, like, our zoning bylaw, it could be added to just any, like, to just the agricultural permitted use. And it also includes all the tourism things, too. So, for any, like, bed and breakfast or visit, that, it would all be things that could be permitted on the property without having to go through the whole zoning bylaw amendment again. So, that's what the owner is proposing here, basically, just to add that use onto that 53 acres of land north of his house. So, for now, you're not gonna see any changes or whatnot. It just gives the owner more options with the, with the future growth for the business. So, basically, the, the box where you see the house, that doesn't change. The exact wording from the original bylaw would be kept the same. But the AG 79, we would simply add that on-farm diversified use as a permitted use on the property. And I think that's, yeah, right now, the owner is working with the same civic number for both the house and the business. That will stay the same for now. It's really just for future uses. That's just a map of the plan. The interior, the interior yards setbacks have already all been, like, all been acknowledged, pardon, especially at 6.4 meters. We just passed a few, a few months ago for the addition on the original building. And that's what it looks like right now. So, that's the manufacturing plant that you see on the left, and the house is the black roof that you have on your right. That's the existing driveway for the business. So, it's completely separated from the house. It's got its own septic system as well, its own well. The house is completely different. So, for future growth, that would be the existing entrance. And in conclusion, based on criteria above, the proposed zoning amendment conforms with the policies of the SDG official plan, consistent with the provincial policy statement, and it's compliant with the township zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Any questions or comments? Seeing none.
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? A second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application this evening? And a third and final time?
Okay, thank you. And motion to adjourn. Councillor Kaddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, and there being no further business to discuss. The public meeting of planning was adjourned at 6:03 PM.
Okay, all those in favor, motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, we will move right into the regular meeting. So, I'd like to welcome everyone to our regular meeting of council for Monday, October 28th, 2024. I would ask if everyone could please stand for the national anthem. Excuse me. Okay, thank you. So, welcome to members of council, staff, and the public. Our call the meeting to order. Are there any declaration of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glingary accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, October the 28th, 2024.
Okay, thank you. Any, any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion is carried, none opposed. Adoption of the previous minutes, councillor Kaddell. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the minutes of the following meeting be adopted as circulated. Regular meeting of council minutes, Tuesday, October 15th, 2024.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, motion is carried, none opposed. Moving on to delegations, I'd like to welcome the Glengarry Artists Collective, President Bobby Luchapatra, and Vice President Yvonne Callaway.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. The Glengarry Artists Collective is very happy to present to you the artwork that you chose out of the ones that were submitted for our yearly township gift to add to the Alexandria Louvre. And that is entitled, where is the title?
Thank you.
Ah, Glengarry Wetlands by Lynn Ayers. This is the second piece of hers that you guys have chosen for that gallery. So, this is awesome.
That's awesome. That's great. Alas.
It's all yours.
Councillor Manley from the Arts, Culture and Heritage to accept. That would look good in my house. Right. It's really nice.
Oh.
Where I get a picture of that, I think.
Want to get your hands in there, boss?
Perfect.
That's great.
Thank you so much. On behalf of council and Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee, another very, very beautiful piece of work to go in the Louvre, like you said. Thank you so much for all the work that you do in North Glengarry.
Thank you for all the support you give the collective.
Thank you.
I hope you don't have to pay more taxes, because it's the Louvre, right? Thank you. Okay, that's great. Okay, moving on to Treasury Department Court of Revision Appointment, Caledonia Creek Municipal Drain, councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm moved by myself, seconded by councillor Madden. The council of the township of North Glengarry receives report DR 2024-04, Court of Revision Appointment, Caledonia Creek Municipal Drain, and that bylaw 482024, be read a first, second, and third time, enacted in open council this 28th day of October, 2024.
Okay, thank you. Zoe, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2023, a section 76 project was initiated in the nation township for the Caledonia Creek Municipal Drain. The purpose was to update the plan, schedule of assessment, and watershed boundaries of the drain. The nation council gave the first and second reading of the provisional bylaw, and the next step is to hold a court of revision. As land in North Glengarry is affected, North Glengarry must appoint a member to the court of revision to hear appeals. Staff recommend that the Kenyan ward councillor be appointed through the attached bylaw. Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, nobody's putting their hand up to say anything, because, all right. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Congratulations on your appointments. We're very proud of you here. Okay, so, next, and whoever did this to me is, something's gonna happen to them, but we have no items under the consent agenda, so we don't need that. And next one is the AMT CO recommendations for updates to the Municipal Elections Act. I have a motion moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, whereas election rules need to be clear supporting candidates and voters in their electoral participation, and election administrators in running elections. And whereas legislation needs to strike the right balance between providing clear rules and frameworks to ensure the integrity of the electoral process. And whereas the legis, I'm not starting over. Whereas the legislation must also reduce administrative and operational burden for municipal staff, ensuring that local election administrators can run elections in a way that responds to the unique circumstances of their local communities. And whereas the municipal Elections Act, 1996 MEA, will be 30 years old by the next municipal and school board elections in 2026. And whereas the MEA sets out the rules for local elections, the Assessment Act, 1990, and the Education Act, 1990, also contain provisions impacting local elections, adding more places for voters, candidates, and administrators to look for the rules that bind the local democratic process in Ontario. Whereas with rules across three pieces of legislation, and the MEA containing a patchwork of clauses, there are interpretation challenges, inconsistencies, and gaps to fill. And whereas the act can pose difficulties for voters, candidates, contributors, and third-party advertisers to read, to interpret, to comply with, and for election administrators to enforce. And whereas while a local election are run as efficiently and effectively as can be, within the current legislative framework, modernization and continuous improvement is needed to ensure the act is responsive to today's needs and tomorrow's challenges. And whereas to keep the public trust and improve safeguards, the act should be reviewed, considering the ever-changing landscape, which impacts elections administration, including privacy, the threats of foreign interference, increased spread of misinformation, and the increased use of technologies like artificial intelligence and the use of digital identities. And whereas the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks, and Treasurers of Ontario, AMCT CO, CTO, reviewed the act and has provided several recommendations, including modernizing the legislation, harmonizing rules, and streamlining and simplifying administration. And whereas AMCTO put forward recommendations for the amendments ahead of the 2026 elections, and longer-term recommendations for amendments ahead of the 2030 elections. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the council of the township of North Glengarry calls for the province to update the MEA with priority amendments as outlined by AMCTO before summer 2025, and commence work to review and rewrite the MEA with longer-term recommendations ahead of the 2030 elections. And further, that this resolution be forwarded to all municipalities in Ontario for support, and that each endorsement be then forwarded to the Minister of Municipal Hares and Housing, the Minister of Education, the Minister of Public and Business Service Directory, Delivery, Minister of Finance, the Premier of Ontario, the local Member of Provincial Parliament, AMCTO, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, and all Ontario municipalities. I know. Yeah, okay, Jenna. We'll talk later. Did you do that? You know, that's supposed to go to the new guy. Any discussion on the, on the motion? I think it's, I think this is needed, and there are so many different rules that we don't really understand. And I'll be interested to see if the provincial government can get this done before 2025, and in time for the 2026 elections. But, you know, it's, anyways, I think it's, it's good that where it's coming from, that's the people who run these elections. And so, let's hope that we support it. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. There are none opposed. I think that took longer than our whole meeting. So, notice a motion, next regular meeting, November 12th at 6:00 PM in the council chambers. There's no one here for question period, and we have already done, there was a closed session on the agenda. We've already done that prior to the meeting. So, there'll be no closed session in the regular council meeting. And confirming bylaw, councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Kaddell, that the council of the township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw 50-2024, being a bylaw to adopt, confirm, and ratify matters dealt with by resolution. And that bylaw 5024 be read a first, second, and third time, and enacted in open council this 28th day of October, 2024.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. And before we adjourn, are there any upcoming events? I believe that the firemen have, the Alexandria firefighters have a breakfast on Sunday. Are we aware of...